Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time has arrived for us to commence our March second, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting. We would now be favored with an invocation by Digger Daryl Rollins.
Good evening, Dr. Elliott, Board members, Mrs. Rollins, Mr. Harrison. Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Perkins, indeed, everyone, under the sound of my voice, amen. Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you this evening, oh God, for, amen, this awesome opportunity, God, to once again be here in the land of the dying, amen. Hoping one day, oh God, to make it into the land of the eternal living. Father God, right now, Lord, we, we thank you for another day. God, we ask right now, oh Lord, that you will bless this board, oh God, and its members. Bless our administrator, oh God. We ask you would bless everyone under the sound of my voice, oh God. Reminding us all, oh God, that the words we may speak tonight, oh God, and the meditations that we may have in our hearts, amen, it should be, indeed, it must be, amen, acceptable in your sight. And although, oh God, we may not agree on all issues, Lord, we can certainly agree to disagree in a respectful way. And so bless us right now, oh God, and we shall be blessed. Keep us, oh God, and we shall be kept. And for that, God, you alone shall be glorified. For us, in Jesus's name, we pray. Thank God, amen.
Amen. We do now call this meeting to order, and we will, at this time, have a moment of silence. Thank you. Let us stand down for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you have before you our agenda for our scheduled meeting. And I need a action on the adoption of the agenda, agenda, with one special request to add to the agenda. That is, a special recognition for a very valuable citizen of our county. If we could get a motion on the agenda, if there are no questions on it, put it before the board now for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would... That we would adopt the agenda as it has been presented with the addition.
A second. Has been properly moved in second, all in favor. Let it be known by the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda has been adopted. First item is our special recognition.
Yes. Again, good evening. We've had our work session, but I will again speak to our chair and, and members of the board, and Mr. Harrison, Ms. Perkins, and all that assembled. I cannot tell you that it gives me such great pleasure to be able to present this surprise recognition on tonight. We know that we just came off the heels of February being Black History Month, and we are pleased that the Surrey NAACP had recognition in the county in honoring our black history. But March is Women's History Month. And if you look this way, you can see that you have amongst us a very notable woman in Mrs. Judith Little. Mrs. Judith Little, I said a surprise, right?
Yes.
So Mrs. Judith Little became the first woman elected and the first African-American woman to serve on this Board of Supervisors when she was elected in nineteen ninety-nine. This year marks Mrs. Little your twenty-third year as a public servant and a loyal and dedicated member to the board. Having retired after thirty-three years of working with the United States Department of Agriculture, your service, passion, and commitment for community extends over fifty years.
Oh, never thought of it.
Accolades are many, as you have served on many boards and commissions. Most notably, your election as the two thousand and fifteen-sixteen president of the Virginia Association of Counties, that is huge.
Yes, it was.
And your term on the Surrey County Board of Supervisors as Chair, Vice Chair, and certainly an engaged member. So during Women's History Month, a time when we celebrate the economic, political, and social achievements of women, we congratulate you, Mrs. Little.
Thank you.
On your service to the residents of Surrey County. Now, while we do not have a properly worded resolution in full on tonight, all framed up to present to you, the action on tonight is to ask the board to do a properly worded resolution, and we can certainly present that to you at a later date.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And prior to the board taking that action, I'm going to ask Mr. Elliott, as Chair, to present you with this in honor, again, and recognition of your service to Surrey County. And as you know, Mrs. Little, you have some surprise visitors in the audience, so family of Mrs. Little, if you all mind standing.
Mrs. Little, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of Surrey County, we want to present this to you for your dedicated service to the citizens of Surrey County as being the first and only woman who has been elected to the Board of Supervisors of Surrey County. Thank you for your service, and may God continue to bless you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Little, would you like to have any comments at this time?
Sure, if, if, if it's okay with the board.
The board permits.
Okay, thank you. First of all, to those who are here in my family, and those others who are here from my community, I appreciate you being here. I was kind of shocked when, I go, well, why did they pick tonight to come? Because one of them has been before, and the other one has not been before, of my two daughters. And so I was like, I don't know what's going on about that, but anyway. But I just want to say, thank you to the Board of Supervisors and the administration for the recognition tonight. I certainly appreciate it. And I had never given it a thought that I have been serving Surrey County for fifty-three years. But I will say that it has been a blessing. I love Surrey County, and when I went into it, that's why I went into it, was because I do love Surrey County. And thank all of you. I certainly appreciate, I love plants, so this is right on.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Board members, we have before us our consent items. Let's pull up the agenda. We do have before us our consent items, and they'd be in the approval of the draft minutes from our February the second meeting, and our work session on February the twenty-third, the approval of the draft minutes for our joint meeting with the school board on February the twenty-seventh, and the approval for accounts payable for the month of January, requests for a public hearing dealing with easement, then a request for... We have two requests for public hearings, three requests for public hearings, and a budget amendment appropriated grant funds that we received from Jen and Foundation to receive those funds. Are there any questions on those items? Do we need to pull any one of those items out for discussion? If there be none, we will ask for action on our consent items.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve our consent items listed, one through eight.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second.
Has been properly moved in second, all in favor. Let it be known by the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Board members, the next item on our agenda is our public hearing in regards to the Surrey County Comprehensive Plan update. Mr. Wade.
Good evening, Chairman Elliott.
Evening.
Members of the board, Ms. Rollins, Mr. Harrison, and Ms. Perkins. Tonight, we have before you a public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan update. The Planning Commission have been working on this project for a little over, at this time, a little bit over a year now. And through various avenues of, of public involvement, we do have our consultants here tonight that assist us with the process. Summit behind me is Ms. Ann Darby, and she'll be doing the presentation tonight for you all. And if you all have any questions, please, please let us know, but she's here to do her presentation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Elliott, members of the board. Thank you so much for having us here. Again, my name is Ann Darby. I'm the Planning Department Manager for Summit Design and Engineering, and we've had the honor of working with Surrey, with staff, the Planning Commission, for just about a year now, working on this Comprehensive Plan Amendment. I want to just review a little bit the process, the opportunities for engagement. We started with public participation in April, two thousand and twenty-two. We held two focus groups. They were comprised of a variety of different stakeholders. There were landowners, there were people who were for energy projects. I'm going to keep accidentally saying solar, because solar is what came out when we talk about energy projects. We also had a public open house at that time. In April, we also started a public survey that was distributed. We had a hundred and eighty-one responses. They were mostly people that are very focused on, on the issue already. We closed that survey in June, and we published a summary of the survey results. And we also, sorry, then in June, two thousand and twenty-two, we continued that conversation with the Planning Commission. We went over many, many, many different, and I just, I just say that to, so that you know, it's, this has been very thoughtful and very, very methodical. We discussed many different scenarios with the Planning Commission. You'll remember that I was here in June of two thousand and twenty-two to discuss the progress with you. We offered at that point three solutions to the board, and that, excuse me, not solutions, three options, and that was alternative that would create policy that wouldn't allow any new energy projects, the alternative of having no new restrictions, or something in between. The board at that time said something in between, and we went forward with GIS analysis, a lot of GIS analysis, which we will, I will present to you also in this, in this presentation. So, and that's last summer, and into last fall, we continued with that analysis. We went back to the Planning Commission, and we were in constant contact with staff on this. In October, we had a second open house to admit, to review the draft. We had a lot of comments on the draft. We spoke again to the Planning Commission in November, two thousand and twenty-two, and then the Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve the amendment as it is, in the, in the final version, in their meeting last month. And then tonight, obviously, is a public hearing. Just to recap, there were two focus groups, two open houses in the survey. We did a lot of research. We researched what other localities in Virginia do. We researched what other localities across another states do, and different ways that, that localities in Virginia are able to limit to the degree that they see fit, energy projects. Again, the GIS analysis, and I'll go through that, I'll show you a bunch of maps. They are in line with best practices, and they're in line with public input. So we, again, to reiterate, talked about this a lot, discussed a lot with the Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, and then there was one Planning Commission Subcommittee that was very, very involved. There's, this PowerPoint says several drafts of the Comprehensive Plan amendments. We counted today, there have been seventeen drafts, and those drafts are reflective, each time, each change was reflective of another comment, Planning Commission comments, board comments, and public comments. I do want to address one, all of the public comments that were made last time we presented to the Planning Commission. We, we took notes, we wrote them down, and the Planning Commission discussed them in detail, and we made the changes that the Planning Commission recommended. One of the ones I do want to point out is that someone made a comment that, a question about whether or not making these new restrictions on where energy projects may be developed would take away someone's property rights if they were in the agricultural M-one or M-two district. There's, we did, GIS analysis said that there's very few, there are very few properties that that would apply to, but the fact is that because any property right now that anybody wants to develop into an energy project has to go through a conditional use permit, we're not taking away any property rights that a resident currently has. So that's, that's a well researched, but a short answer in the end. So again, when we did community engagement, what we heard, these are just some bullet points of what we heard the most loudly and the most clearly. Utility scale solar is mostly what's on people's minds. The energy projects, theoretically, this could, you know, this amendment would deal with battery storage, with wind, if that's ever an issue, but utility scale solar, clearly, I think everyone knows that that is the, the projects that are in, most in question. Distributed solar and community solar, so smaller solar projects, are much more generally accepted to be located anywhere in the county. Seventy percent of survey respondents believe that energy projects, new energy projects, should be limited to a quote, "very small percentage of land in the county." So we took that from the beginning, that's the feedback we heard, and this, this amendment is reflective of that. The most significant items of concern were displacement of wildlife, a loss of farmland and timberland, loss of historical and agricultural character. People then, that came from proponents of tourism, proponents of agriculture, a lot of different camps had the same concern, and that was loss of this character. There were some issues from previous solar developments about traffic, wildlife passage, stormwater, and variance from site plans. I believe that a lot of these things have been, that have been cleared up, so that new projects are going through a more strict, more rigorous process, and so these problems probably shouldn't happen again, but we did hear that a lot, and it's worth mentioning. So our GIS analysis, what we did was look at the county, and, and we, sorry, yeah, we looked at the county as a whole. We looked at the different residential areas, the residential corridor and the residential investment area that are treated in very specific ways in the Comprehensive Plan, towns, and then wetlands, where you wouldn't be able to develop something anyway, wetlands and water. First of all, just under two hundred thousand acres are in the county as a whole. As you can see, that, the county boundary goes into the river. So we then first removed the river, removed water, removed wetlands from the land area that we are considering for analysis. We removed towns and key residential areas, that's almost thirty thousand acres. And that, again, is in the current Comprehensive Plan, that so, I conflate them all the time, we all conflate them. Energy projects are not supposed to be in the towns' residential areas or the residential corridor. That's current, current recommendation from the plan. The Planning Commission was concerned about historic sites and parcels, so they asked for those to be removed, so that there is consideration in the creation of energy projects around historic sites. They asked that they be buffered, and this was back and forth, and I think that this is probably, you've seen drafts of this, but by a half mile. It went back and forth between a, a mile and a half mile, ended at a half mile. So if we combine those areas that are inappropriate for development, so historic areas, wetlands, water, towns, and residential corridors, it's eighty-four thousand acres about. And those are the areas, so basically, these maps are just opposites of one another, as you can see. So there are areas that are not appropriate for energy projects. They're about a hundred and thirteen, a hundred and fourteen thousand acres. And then we looked at transmission lines. So we all know that we want energy projects to be the most effective, most efficient as possible, so located near transmission lines, this is a one-mile buffer. So that leaves fifty-five thousand acres about. So it narrows down to land where energy projects might be appropriate. There are still over thirty-five thousand acres that energy projects might be appropriate, within transmission lines, outside of a mile of historic areas, outside of towns, outside of residential corridors. So this is just a brief summary of the policy. It differentiates between utility scale solar, community scale solar, and distributed, and we stick with state definitions of those. And then it just, it says that the county will support the installation of distributed energy facilities wherever considered appropriate, and set clear permitting standards. A lot of this, a lot of the amendment is making recommendations to, no matter what the decision is, make sure that it's very clear from the beginning. So someone doesn't come to Surrey, think they can maybe develop a property into an energy project, and then get knocked down. So it's for everyone's benefit, very clear from the beginning. So distributed energy projects will be allowed by right in residential, commercial, and mixed-use zoning districts. Utility scale energy projects are limited to, to no more than ten percent of developable land. So it's over fifteen thousand acres, and that is in response to both Planning Commission comments, a lot of the public and survey feedback, and what we heard at public open houses, and also what we heard from the board, which was to find something in between, totally limiting and not limiting at all. So utility scale and community scale energy facilities will be considered if they meet the following conditions. Within one mile of the transmission line, and that's measured by the centroid of the panels, if this is, or the energy-producing equipment, whatever that is. And that is so that, this might sound familiar, that's so that a developer could not purchase a property and then purchase other properties to get closer to a transmission line. This makes that very clear, that we're talking about the centroid of the energy-producing equipment. So the project must be screened from residential corridors, residential investment areas, and towns. The property must be more than point five miles from historic sites. No part of the facilities should be within seven hundred and fifty feet of any place of worship or any cemetery. Every project must provide wildlife corridors, so that you're not preventing, and that's, again, a lot of what we heard, we heard from a lot of hunters about different changes and movements of wildlife, deer, deer behaving differently. So continuous wildlife corridors to be provided. Vegetative screening should prevent the facility from being seen from residential, commercial, or mixed-use areas, and any noise generated, that's another thing that we heard back in the focus groups, is noise. And that is, so noise generating elements should be at least seven hundred and fifty feet, however that, wherever that is situated, from residential, commercial, or mixed-use areas. So that cuts down on the impacts of the projects. And so also, the projects can't be within a half a mile of existing community scale or utility scale energy. Continued, the, this, just more general statements, not about placement, but in general, says that, the amendment says that supporting the use of agrivoltaics, which is farming with solar equipment, for example, that would be supported, if that ever were to come up. Advocacy in general for the increased financial benefit from additional solar facilities. So I know that you've all been part of the conversations of figuring out how a county can benefit, the revenue sharing, and so if there's an opportunity to advocate for increased revenue sharing, according to this amendment, the county would be in favor of that. And strengthen requirements for solar facility decommissioning, just to make sure that whatever is created at the end of its useful life, the land goes back to the way it was, as much as possible. So, and the amendment also makes recommendations to clarify the approval process. It doesn't, this hasn't been exactly worked out, so it's not specific. It recommends to clarify the approval process. Right now, there's a multi-step process, a rezoning, and then a conditional use permit, and a citing agreement. So the, the, however that works, the amendment recommends clarifying that, simplifying that, so that they're not unintentional barriers to development of new project. One of the options is to create a new zoning district for utility scale solar. Again, it's not specified, there are ideas there, and there's the GIS analysis and recommendations to clarify. So in conclusion, this has been a very thorough process, starting last April to now, to March. We have involved the community, people have given a lot of input. The Planning Commission, in particular, the Planning Commission Subcommittee has been very, very active in thinking of many, many different scenarios, and parsing out wording, and, and doing more and more analysis. It has, it's been one of the most thorough, well-thought-out processes that I've ever been a part of, honestly. And the, ideally, it should benefit the county and the developers by providing clarity and laying out the priorities. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions in regards to the presentation? If there be none, we now open up our public hearing in regards to the adoption of the update to our Comprehensive Plan. If you would like to speak on this matter, you come to the podium, state your name and your district, and you have three minutes to speak. Well, we do have two that signed up. It is Mr. Sam Edwards, in regards to the Comprehensive Plan, is he here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. You know, I had, as we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, the last few words said, "liberty and justice for all." I'm concerned about landowners' rights. I think that this is a model that can create, besides the fact we're restricting landowner rights, in my mind, I think it creates a model for future infringement on landowners' rights, whether it's solar, you want an RV park, you want to build a meat processing plant. If somebody doesn't like how it looks, they can come, you get enough people together, and prevent these projects from taking off. The pay, pay consultants have told me that it's more like seven thousand acres are available in Surrey, not the fifteen thousand that's out there, because if you take these overlay maps that are referred to tonight, and your consultant explained that in their calculations, it was fifteen thousand, I've got consultants that say it's seven thousand, so I think we're restricting it too much. In addition to that, the one that really kind of surprised me or shocked me a little bit was the half mile from historical sites. I think in Surrey County, eventually, as we increase the number of historical sites in Surrey County, it will be impossible to have a solar, or any kind of development. And in reality, I know everybody likes to keep timber, agriculture, and all that together, and Surrey tourism, and thinking that's going to be the economic development package of the future. I just don't think that's strong enough to support the money that's needed to run our government as it continues to grow. We need more higher-paying economic development, like solar, to support it. And I think we're shortsighted in, in allowing that. Last but not least, and I'm kind of repeating myself here, I just feel like the landowner rights are being stepped on. It's the farm and timber owner, if farm and timber owners want to keep their land, is, let it be their choice. That would limit it. If they don't want their farm, and they don't want their timber to use for solar, that's... And as long as where they put it doesn't affect others negatively, like, put up the screening, make it far enough away so people can't see it, okay, that's fine. I'm not sure how much impact, nobody's really done a study about how much impact it's going to have on the deer population in Surrey County. I don't know how many of y'all have been so unfortunate to hit a deer, but there seems to be plenty. And why would the game and inland fisheries bring coyotes into Surrey County to control the deer population if we were running into a shortage? I, I just don't think that's a logical argument. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Greg Cresswell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, all staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Greg Cresswell, I'm Senior Development Manager with AES Clean Energy. AES Clean Energy is a subsidiary of AES headquartered in Arlington, Virginia. A little bit of background on the company, locally, you know us as the developers, and now the constructors of the Cavalier Solar Facility that is located here in Surrey, and also in Isle of Wight. Broadly, AES owns four hundred and fifty-five operating sites across the U.S., and in Virginia, we own five operating sites, roughly eight hundred-plus megawatts, with another three thousand megawatts in development, so... with another 3,000 megawatts in development, so productive experience behind us. The proposed Surrey County Comprehensive Plan Update contains several strategies, which we believe have merit and would agreeably assist Surrey in maintaining responsible growth for the energy, energy industry while keeping the desired rural characteristics in the county. Other revisions, we fear, have a sense of being more, more specific and prescriptive in nature, rather than in keeping with the use guidelines in a traditional comprehensive plan. I'd like to discuss a few of those points with you this evening, and I'll try to be quick. I know I've only got a few minutes and quite, you know, quite a few things to discuss. Specifically, Objective Five Strategy Two represents a 10% cap on developable land. I would suggest that's a pretty reasonable number. One thing that I would suggest along with that would be how we define that 10% cap, and what is developable land, or what has already been developed. If you look at existing projects, are we considering the entire parcel? Or are we considering the portion of the parcel which has actually been developed? If you have open land outside of the developed or outside of the fence, it could be used for ag purposes, could be used for timber, could be used for other purposes that are not necessarily energy-related. So I think that might be another alternative to look at, how we phrase this. Objective Five Strategy Three references center of the project site must be within one mile of existing high-voltage transmission lines. I do have a little bit of concern that this could actually be contrary to what it's trying, or what its intent was designed for. If you cite facilities together in a narrow distance of an existing infrastructure, it leads to a highly concentrated and visually disruptive utility corridor.
Mr. Cresswell, you have three minutes, sir.
That's my three minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have any handouts you would like to present to the board, we'd be glad to take them.
Yeah, that's all. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Are there any more comments in regards to the comprehensive plan? Yes, Mr. Dura?
Topic I want to address, and good evening, board, and congratulations to Ms. Little. I, I attended the January PC meeting when they discussed the comp plan, and, and I know there's pros and cons, and I know there's people going to be negative and people positive on the changes, but we'll have to say, having served with y'all and gone through some solar hearings, guidelines are much, much needed. Again, although the pros and cons to them, I wish we would have had some in the very beginning, and when I was serving on that, it would have made a whole lot, a whole lot easier. What I want to do was just a reminder, though, when I attended the PC meeting, there was language that has been taken out of this comp plan that's in front of y'all this evening, and our thanks to the PC Planning Commission for doing that, is that they talked about simplifying the the development process by only requiring a CUP. And Ms. Little and I were only two here this evening, I guess, that were on the board at the time when the solar ordinance was passed. In that time, we said we needed, it was passed fairly quickly, and that we need to go back and revise the solar ordinance, as well as at the board meeting, we inserted a rezoning in that ordinance. And I, at that meeting, actually made the motion and explained to the other board members that rezoning, developers don't like it, but it protects the citizens. A CUP is easier, and more legal liability, won't go into the details. But we, board members, actually inserted that in. And so when y'all do start looking at the ordinance, I would hope that you would continue with the rezoning. I even heard about making a, and we talked about it at that meeting, about making a new category, because we don't have one really, I think it's industrial or something that's, that's in that now. And, and we'll say this, is that Ms. Perkins, I don't know if Hardy Cash was still at Hampton when you were there, but he certainly was when I was there, and he would sit in on the meetings, and he would speak up from time to time. And I said, "What, what's his role?" And they said, "Ombudsman." And I said, "Well, what's an ombudsman?" And they said, "Well, Mr. Cash was here when we passed the zoning ordinance in 1964. He's the guy that knows all the history." And so, Ms. Little, I don't know when you're planning to retire from the board, but when you do, I suggest you make her the ombuds woman. And I, and I laugh about this, but there does need to be continuity, because we do forget the reasonings why. And that's just the reason, and one other thing is that, something when I did read the comp plan update, and again, I appreciate y'all doing it, planning commissioners and planners and consultant, is that it mentions small nuclear. I, I was a little, I think it's a little vague, there's other energy-type projects, I guess is what I'm saying, from wind to different things, and I wouldn't real clear, you understand me, what the, what the plan encompassed. And, and that's it, and thank you, and congratulations to you again.
Thank you, Mr. Dura.
If there be no other comments from the floor, we will now close the public hearing. Are there any comments or concerns from board members, any questions of staff, any comments on what has been presented? If not, we can move forward on the recommendation for the approval of the amendment to our comprehensive plan. Is there any motions from the board at this time on what's before us?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to, excuse me, remove myself of voting on this issue.
Yes, Ms. Cowell, we understand. Are there any questions on what's before us? If there are no questions, chair would entertain a motion for approval or denial.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question at this moment, but I don't think I'm quite ready to vote for the, uh, for what. I think we may need to take a little more time to digest what we're saying. I do, anyway, need a little more time to digest all that has been proposed in this project.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Ms. Little. I think it's a way the staff did a great job with the information, however it's allowed to digest. We just want to make sure that this, we make accurate decision on whatever we decide to do.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Then we have two, and one standing, and we will table this action until further notice. Next item on our business is moving to new business. It is Virginia Outdoor Foundation Amenities Improvement Grant for Surrey County Parks and Rec.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I am going to ask Mr. Harrison, Deputy County Administrator, if he would present this item to the board.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Elliott, members of the board, Mrs. Rollins, Ms. Perkins. Pleased to announce that staff has diligently been working on a grant application with the Virginia Outdoor Foundation. And a huge thanks to Mr. Hal Godfrey, who is our Chair of our EDA, for the connection to VOF. Basically, in essence, what this application is about is, many of you know that we have been looking to do some improvements at our parks and recreation facilities. And this application allows us to do so through a deed of easement, a deed for open space and conservation with VOF. And from what I'm understanding, we're able to apply for up to $200,000 to $500,000 for improvements in amenities at Parks and Recreation. Are there any questions from the board that I could entertain?
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dura.
I do have a question, Mr. Harrison. Is there a deadline for the, I have no problems, I, I, they want us to apply. Is there a deadline?
Yes, ma'am, there's a deadline on the 7th of March. We have a community meeting scheduled for the 6th, so we have all the preliminary information already written up. We want to hear from the community as well, just to get some input from them. And we'll apply, submit our application on the 7th, so 7th of March.
Mr. Dura, have a question, too?
Yes, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison, for this, for this opportunity. With the committee, community meeting on Monday, is that correct, March 6th? Would those suggestions be put into the grant, or is it, or would the funds come in first, and then from the suggestions, you make decisions on the improvements?
So, so there's flexibility, Mr. Pierce. We are going to take any information from the community. The, the money from the, the grant will go towards overall infrastructure plans. We're suggesting certain amenities, we'll hear from the community on certain amenities, and we just have to make sure we keep in constant communication with VOF as to what we are using the funds for. So we have flexibility with VOF as we spend the funds, and we definitely intend to take in the community's input on how we spend the funds.
This is a matching grant, or is it?
It's not a matching grant. So in essence, all we have to do is put an easement on the Parks and Recreation grounds, which is approximately 104 acres. And so there's some wooded acreage there, as well as, as you all know, open space for fields and so on. So a deed of easement for open space and conservation. And that's all we have to do with VOF, we don't have to put any funds towards the application.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there is a resolution that's included in your agenda material that the board will need to take action on tonight. Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for, for working on this. Again, board members, this is another opportunity that we're seeking grant funds for to support the development of the Parks and Recreation facilities. Some of you may remember that back in 2017 or '18 roughly, that the board went through a very similar discussion process amongst the communities, when we talked about making some considerable site improvements to the current Parks and Recreation facility, kind of talked about whether or not we wanted to do something with one of the schools. Again, this is, again, an opportunity that was presented before us to actually apply for a good amount of funding to help in the advancement of some major improvements that, according to some strategic initiatives that this board, you all have talked about over the last few months, staff exercised due diligence in trying to seek grant funds to support the development of Parks and Recreation facilities. So the community meeting that Mr. Harrison just mentioned will take place on Monday at 6 o'clock, or 7?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM at the Parks and Recreation Center, and we encourage the public to come out to make comments for that. The resolution that you have before you, if I may read it at this time, Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Rollins.
States that the designation of Surrey County Parks and Recreation Facility as an open space to be preserved for recreation and conservation with the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, whereas the Surrey County Parks and Recreation Campus exists to offer Surrey County citizens and visitors public recreational access and amenities. Whereas the Surrey County Board of Supervisor intends to improve existing and introduce new recreational amenities at the Surrey County Parks and Recreation Campus. Whereas the Surrey County Board of Supervisor supports the county's application for funding the Virginia Outdoors Foundation for the protection of the grounds for open space, conservation, and recreation for public use. Now therefore be resolved that the Surrey County Board of Supervisors hereby authorizes an easement to be placed on Surrey County Parks and Recreation Campus by the Virginia Outdoors Foundation upon Surrey County being awarded a grant for open space, recreation, and conservation.
Phil, board members, we do have the Resolution 2023-02 for the designation of Surrey County Parks and Recreation Facility as an outdoor space to be preserved for recreation and conservation with the Virginia Outdoor Foundation. What is your pleasure on this resolution?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we, I move that we approve this Resolution 20, 2023-02, the designation of Surrey County Parks and Recreation Facility as an open space to be preserved for recreation and conservation with the Virginia Outdoors Foundation.
Board members, we have a motion on the floor, could we have a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, let it be known by the voting sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion has been adopted. The next item before us goes back to our first order of business, is that is a motion to prepare a resolution for Mrs. Little. We just want to thank her tonight, we want to give her something to take home with other than the plant. So we want to entertain a motion from the board to prepare a resolution for Mrs. Little in regards to her service to the county.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go ahead and get in the process of preparing a resolution for the honorable Ms. Judy Little.
Have a motion, give her a second.
A second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, let it be known by the voting sign of aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ms. Little will get her resolution.
Thank you, board members. Thank you so much, thank you.
At this time, we will turn the meeting over to our county administrator for her report.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and I guess this is the night of recognition. So my first item that I'm going to ask the board to consider tonight, we have another citizen that is assembled before us, and we know this citizen is no stranger to his service in the community as well. So at this time, I am going to ask Mr. Urban Jones, who has served as Surrey County's Parks and Recreation Director, but come forth to receive his honors on tonight. So, board members, at the request of Mrs. Little, we have a resolution, Mr. Jones, to present to you on this evening. And this resolution reads that Mr. Urban A. Jones was inducted into the Norfolk State University Athletic Association Hall of Fame Class of 2023 on February 17, 2023, along with his Norfolk State College football teammates and six other athletes. Surrey County Public Schools hired Mr. Jones as a truant officer in 1980 and a coach for track and field and football. He remains a coach today, totaling 43 years of service in the coaching field. Yes, applause. Mr. Jones has also coached basketball for 19 years and remains in this position as well. In 1983, Mr. Jones was hired as the Director of Parks and Recreation for Surrey County and retired in 2017. He is currently teaching group exercise classes for seniors at Surrey Parks and Recreation, as it stands today. The Board of Supervisors of Surrey County wishes to recognize this milestone to Urban A. Jones' life and the many contributions that he has made to help make Surrey County a better place for all citizens through his active participation in the fairs of the county. Now, therefore be resolved that the Surrey County Board of Supervisors hereby extends heartfelt appreciation to you, Mr. Urban A. Jones, for his endeavors aimed at improving the quality of life for the citizens of the county. Mr. Jones and Mrs. Jones, I believe is here, and I'm not sure of any other family members, if you want to stand and be recognized as well, because we know behind every good man, there's a good woman.
Mr. Jones, for all you have done for Surrey County, and what we know you will continue to do, we present to you this resolution and gratitude for your service to this county. Before, sir? Mr. Jones, you can, you can have a remark if you would like to do so. If, if you don't have one, I, I tell you, me and Mrs. Jones got a thing going on.
Thank you so much for this, for this, for what I kind of hold my emotions in. It's, it's been a great pleasure, a pleasure to be working here in Surrey County. And a little thing about it, too, when I graduated from Norfolk State, and I first worked in Isle of Wight County with the Recreation Department, and then I was, Dr. Penn called me into Surrey to, to work at LP Jackson, and I started coaching there. And then I had the opportunity to come and work at the Recreation Department. And it's been a blessing to, to be working here in this county. And then I have a blessed wife who's been my support. And a special blessing, like I said, she, for the first time, she let me cook a few weeks ago. On Valentine Day, but with all that, and then a special thing, too, a lot of people don't know that William Dick Price, who was, was my coach at Norfolk State, a family is originally from Surrey County. And he was, his mother passed away when he was two years old, and he never got to know a lot of his... passed away when he was two years old and he never got to know a lot of his relatives in Surrey. And he was due to come here for a big family reunion, which we always have a lot of them at, at Surrey. And, uh, but before that, uh, uh, they, one time they named William Dick Price Stadium after him in Norfolk State. And then he was, he couldn't make for that reunion then. The next year he was coming, two, two weeks before that he passed away. But he was an inspiration to, to, to me and, and, and for Surrey. And, uh, and he had, he didn't plan for me to come to work to Surrey, but it, the law worked it out that way. And I appreciate that. I thank you all so much. And, uh, again, I thank my wife for marrying me and letting me cook one time.
Mr. Mr. Jones, be- before you go, I, I see you have some mighty big rings on your hand. How many state championships in Surrey did you take part in?
Five.
Five state championships. That deserves a hand clap. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, um, at this time, I will ask Ms. Renee Chaplin to come forth and give us a economic development update if you're ready, Ms. Chaplin. Okay?
Thank you so much, members of the board, Mrs. Rollins, Mrs. Perkins, Mr. Harrison. I certainly appreciate Mr. Chairman having me here this evening. Um, we're going to talk about a little bit of what's happening at the Surrey marketplace. It is well underway. It is an exciting project and, um, I know that, uh, many of you have been questioning about it and we've, we've been working on this for several months. And right now, the concrete floors have been cut open and much of the piping and conduit has already been in there, been replaced. Um, the bathrooms are underway. Uh, flooring was picked last week. Uh, the ceilings and lighting are almost complete with the LED lights. It's looking great, looking bright in there. And, uh, remember again, I've told you this, it is an old building. So there's been some surprises that has happened with some rot and all of that has been replaced. And, uh, they're doing a great job in identifying issues from the renovation and repairing those as we move forward. Um, the requirements for this building are food grade requirements. So of course, all of those are being done to spec. The steel framing is almost complete. Uh, and, and when I say steel framing, it's like the studs, but they're actually steel. Uh, the old HVAC units are gone and the new units are all in. And they're really kind of, uh, uh, efficient units. They're the, uh, the large ones that are outside that are kind of the oblong rather than the big square units. Very new, uh, technology that is supposed to have high efficiency. So it'll be great for the store. Uh, power and electrical systems in the building are being upgraded to the new code standards. And of course, the electrical permit came in last week. So that is moving along. Some of the areas that have been open can now be closed up. Uh, the increased power capacity with the electrical upgrades, all the refrigeration and freezer equipment will be coming to the store in the next couple of weeks, uh, after the floors are actually done in the front part of the store when you go into the front entryway. Um, the back doors, it was determined today, the glass doors will still be a back entry there. So I know many people are, are familiar with the building. Um, the areas where the wood had been exposed on the outside, the soffits have been replaced there, a lot of the, uh, areas on the outside, because it's an old building, had poor drainage areas. All of that is being repaired. So it's not just the interiors, the exterior as well. Um, contracts are making weekly, contractors are making weekly, uh, progress on this and pretty much, uh, every single week, we're having a meeting with E D A and staff and bringing things forward with that, with that project. So, uh, hopefully in the next two to three weeks, uh, you'll start seeing more and more. And, uh, yeah, you'll notice the windows are all boarded up. We want it to be a surprise, but, uh, I can assure you things are moving. In addition to that, uh, one of the things that we're working on, many of you've heard about the business grants that the E D A is offering. We've had several applicants for that and we are booked with meetings to review and talk with the folks and answer any questions, uh, through, uh, Mr. Howell, uh, with the E D A. Howell Godfrey. Sorry about that. And, uh, talking to people, answering questions about the applications, but we've had some good candidates for that as well. So continuing to work to, um, enhance our parks and properties that we have to offer economic development solutions for companies that may be looking for a new build. Uh, and, uh, this year we are excited that, uh, the site that's over, that, that actually touches on four sixty, we preliminarily will be working on some, um, phase ones for that and some other standards that are required to, you know, be able to attract some industries. Happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to economic development. Um, anything from the board?
Mr. Chair? Yes, Ms. Cohen. Um, can you give us an estimated, um, opening date for the market?
Uh, I can give you an estimated, uh, construction date will be, completion of construction will be late spring and the, the opening would be shortly thereafter. And again, barring no surprises that we run into, because we had gotten a couple of delays as it relates to the wood that was rotted and some of the soffit and, you know, additional construction that had to be done. Cause when they've opened up things, they've had, uh, hidden damage that they didn't realize was there when they initially looked at the building. But that's, you know, a renovation rather than a new build.
Are there any, any other questions, uh, from Mrs. Chaplin?
Yeah, Ms. Chaplin, question, if you don't mind.
Yes, Ms. Pierce.
Excuse me for my ignorance, but if there's a, um, like a blueprint or something, if, um, we could see exactly how the inside may look?
Inside the store?
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, we're talking about the market, yes, ma'am. All of the plans are there located on site. And if you have an interest in, in coming over, I'm happy to meet you there. And actually all of the plans for everything, the plumbing plans, the, uh, construction plans, everything. And it shows you, you know, the walls and everything that's there. And we keep them inside the store just in case someone wants to come by from administration or you folks. Happy to do that.
Thank, thank you for that.
You're certainly welcome.
That would, that would include a little tour, possibly?
If, if you folks want to work that out, that's, yeah, happy to do it.
Ms. Chaplin, okay. Um, if there's no other questions from the board, while you're standing, um, there is another item that I may get your assistance and touch on as pertains to economic development, as workforce development being a component of economic development. Um, and I know that she's back there probably smiling, but I just cannot help for asking her to just come forth and just have a seat up front for a second. Um, Ms. Linda Ghoston, Workforce Development and Mr. Harrison, if you have any comments, please share. Um, but board members, I had this awesome opportunity today to go down to Virginia, excuse me, to, uh, Dominion Power Training Facility. Now, if you all recall, board members, last year, um, during the budget process, you know, it's our role to sort of kind of help you all take a landscape of the community and kind of see some of the things and recommend policies to you all, um, that's consistent with some of the, uh, goals and objectives that you all had asked us to do. So on last year, I presented to the board, um, the fact that we need to think about workforce development in the county and the fact that we need to pay attention that we do have Dominion facilities here and the fact that we have a wonderful student population in Surrey County and how we can connect those opportunities. So you all, thank you, Board of Supervisors, for agreeing, um, to put some funding in our current year's budget to help with a workforce development program whereby we can connect with some businesses like Dominion. So today we had the opportunity, I've, I've, I've told Ms. Ghoston, um, and asked her, this is an opportunity to execute in the program. Um, today I had the opportunity to go and witness eight students, eight, uh, from Surrey County High School. Um, the assistant principal, Mr. Pope, was also there. So I'm sure that he shares my comments along with the school board and Dr. Sims. Uh, but that was one of eight students, uh, all eighteen-year-olds from Surrey County High School who have gone through a, uh, four-day training program with, um, Dominion. And they talked about how much they had learned so much by this opportunity for them to be able to go there and see, um, and witness, um, the various operation and procedures at Dominion and the fact that they are now aware that there is opportunity right here in Surrey, whether or not they choose to go to college or whether or not they chose to seek a different career path. Um, their eyes were open and they said their minds were open and they were so much appreciative of the opportunity to take a part in this internship program. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I probably can go on, on and on because I really got goosebumps and I was tickle pink, but I want to give Ms. Ghoston an opportunity, even though I didn't prep you ahead of time. But if you just want to say something, board members, um, this is something that she executed, uh, with, uh, Dave Zimmerman. And, uh, again, just a wonderful opportunity. And so Ms. Ghost, and they just spoke so highly of Surrey County and Ms. Ghoston and her work to help bring this internship program. So can we give her a hand, please?
Good evening, Chair, Elliot, board members. I would just like to thank Ms. Rollins for the vision and thank the board for the funding to be able to bring it all together. I contacted, um, two of the gentlemen at Dave Zimmerman and told them what I wanted to do and immediately they just jumped on it. We were having mon- weekly meetings, the school system, the kids were excited. And when I went to meet with them, I asked them what would make them want to go there. And they said to find opportunities in Surrey. And then one of the young men said, to get paid. But it was, they were so excited. Their eyes were opened up and they said, they, all, I think all eight of them said they felt the closeness.
Yes.
By working of what they saw and they saw families. And it was one young lady who was going to school for psy- be a, for psychology and she said she had changed that. She was thinking about going to, to be a painter. So I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity that we were able to grant to the students. And they have already gave us another date. That they want to continue to grow this program to expose the kids, to see what they can do right here in Surrey County.
Absolutely. And I, I cannot help also to say that they said that they were very surprised of the diversity, um, that they saw down at Dominion. And all I'm going to say is it's Women History Month and a lot of women in, in higher positions work at Dominion. So they was very happy to see that. Um, so they talked about the diversity and they talked about, um, just a whole array of things that I'm sure that would make you all proud as well, board members and citizens. So thank you again for that. Mr. Harrison, you, any comments?
No, you all have said it all amazing. Great job, Ms. Ghost.
Yes, great job.
Thank you. Um, board members, the only other thing I have, um, as you can see on number two on that item, there was a mid-year financial outlook, but we did move that to our, um, work session on this evening. Um, as you all know, that we are in the midst of our budget process and I can say that I look forward, um, to working with the board and helping develop a budget that we will be presenting, um, to the board on the first Thursday in April. Um, my email address is mrollins@suricounterva.gov. If there's anyone have any, uh, questions and comments as we are preparing for that budget process, please feel free to email, um, me those comments or questions. Um, other than that, Mr. Chairman, we do need to go back, um, and take action on one new business item. Okay?
Board members, we, uh, failed to, I failed to get a motion on to table the item number one of our, uh, public hearing in regards to the... Not my mistake. Number two on the new business, Marina Management Agreement. We need a motion to table that until our next, uh, meeting.
So I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Been properly moved and second, all in favor. Let it be known by the voting sound of aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. Thank you. We will now open up our meeting for public comments. And we have first on our public comments, Dr. Daniel, I want to say your name right. I don't know if it's a Y O P, Shea or Shop, one of the two. Shea, all right.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, Dr. Daniel Shea, Surrey County resident, uh, for about five weeks now. And, uh, this place is very, very special. Um, over our year building our home and visiting the county, we've had, uh, so many positive welcoming experiences from residents and county officials. Um, I'd like to thank the citizens and business owners I've met for being so kind and helpful. Um, people like Rose, I talk to people on the ferry. It gives me twenty minutes to meet people I've never meet before. And, you know, if your bumper stickers offend me, I'll find out what you're thinking. Bumper stickers inspire me, I'll find out what you're thinking too. But, uh, people like Rose, who heads a county trash pickup, um, Dave, who brings his expertise from Hampton Roads Vineyards to my backyard and current Nine Vines, I'm no competition for him. Um, cup, cupcake and sandwich shop owners and roadside stand owners and so many more wonderful people. Um, I've had positive and helpful experiences with your inspectors, people like Matt Westheimer and Ms. Frances Bailey. Post offices federal, but I'd like to thank postmaster, Ms. Patricia Sims and Lele and Charlene, who have all been so kind and helpful. Um, and I've had the pleasure of meeting the county attorney, Ms. Lola Perkins, um, who is very friendly and clearly eager to make a positive impact. So I look forward to getting to know all of you better, um, as we spend more time here. So as of this moment, I'm too new to comment on the comprehensive plan or much of anything else political here. Um, I do know that what drew us to Surrey County was its rural character and the people. Um, and I'm hoping to see our rural friendly way of life preserved. Um, and I hear elements of that as you discuss the comprehensive plan. So thank you all for being very thoughtful with that. Um, as far as preserving our way of life as rural and friendly, I know I support that, my family supports that. I'm sure many others will as well. So thank you for your time and for your service to Surrey County. I look forward to getting to know all of you better.
Thank you. Next we have, uh, Ms. Fran Barnes.
Good evening. I am Fran Barnes from, uh, Claremont District. I will say to Dr. Shea, I think you've been to our historical society. So do come there because, uh, we're right down the road here. And that's what I just wanted to make sure. I know all of you receive our, um, our newsletter, hopefully, if we didn't goof on any addresses. Uh, I did, Mr. Bird, I learned you were missing, but Ms. Dawson took care of you. I don't know. That's, I'm too busy and I miss things. But we are having a program on Mon- on Monday, March the thirteenth, and it's in the, um, newsletter. But just wanted to make sure the public knew that this is going to be really neat. This is, uh, a miss, I'm not sure he's doctor and I, I want to be sure of that. Mr. Andrew, Andrew, Andre Taylor, I'll get it. He is an oral historian and he has been hired at William &amp; Mary and I think in the year of twenty, in, in, uh, twenty twenty, he came as the, uh, the pandemic was going on and I think he was somewhat limited in what he could do then, but he's rolling as I understand. He is going to teach, talk to us, all of us. It's free to the public, although we're going to start putting out a donation basket because it takes money to do some of these things. Um, but he's going to talk about doing or taking oral histories, especially from our elders here that have, I have a friend who's ninety-two and he is, he's very familiar with Claremont Manor and the days when Melissa Rogers, the movie star was there. And I want to get those stories from him. He's told me I need to write them down. And so we're looking forward to this. He's going to tell us how to do that, why to do that. I think we all know that. Um, and, um, just give us some ideas and then we hope to do this. And this kind of came about because we went over to the old school, uh, African-American school in Claremont and we realized there's a lot of stories there and we don't know them. And then a lady came in of Surrey resident and she said, tell me about Loafers Oak, Loners Oak, Loafers Oak. And we, nobody knew much about that. And what's the story and why was that named that? And then another person was looking at the records at William &amp; Mary and saw that Bo and the late Bo, Bohannon now, but, and Hannah had stories over there from his many, many family histories. And so I think it's a great idea to do this. And this, this is coming on Monday, March, uh, thirteenth, and it is at the Parks and Rec. Our programs always start at seven. Mr. Taylor says he will come early. So if you want to come in, it's about six fifteen. Of course, Mr. Rollins, I got to have the building open at six fifteen. Um, and, and he will talk to people ahead of time. And I told him we would have him on the nine o'clock ferry because I didn't want him to sit an hour. He said he did not make mind, mind waiting till ten if, um, somebody had questions or want to talk to him. So it's going to be a great program and we welcome everyone. I want to add real quickly that I worked with Urban Jones for ten years in pony baseball. And it's, it's sad to think of all the people who've worked in the pony baseball here that have passed away, but, uh, I'm sure Urban was really glad when my youngest son went to high school and he didn't have to put up with me anymore because we, we found umpires. He marked fields. He is truly a, 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 ex- inspiration to all. And the kids all know him because he, we just did pony baseball for ten years and, and I appreciate him. And he tells me he's a great cook, but I don't know about that.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Trevor Brinkman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, county administration, citizens and guests, my name is Trevor Brinkman, Carsley District. I am a veteran Surrey County High School teacher and I'm here to speak in support of the school board's proposed budget, which asks you to commit to a process which will begin to work to restoring equity and transparency which asks you to commit to a process which will begin to work to restoring equity and transparency to the payment of all teachers. Your support of this proposed budget will finally begin to correct systemic problems which have disproportionately harmed dedicated veteran teachers. All of you support paying teachers at the published salary scale. You need to justify to your constituents why we are spending more money on schools in a time of declining enrollment. Enrollment is disconnected from the disparity that unequally impacts chronically underpaid staff. I plan to explain to you the origins and impact of this opaque inequity. During the recession of 2008, 2009, the schools were asked to cut their budget. It is a complicated story, but the solution, a freezing of pay scale steps, meant that the staff may get bonuses or mandated percentage raises, but they could not expect pay scale step increases. However, published pay scales continued to increase annually and in an effort to recruit new teachers, veteran staff were not paid at these publicly stated amounts. New hires were paid at published scale, but veteran teacher contracts were adjusted to frozen rates and have varied by teacher. Here's an example of three veteran teachers who have all taught at Surrey for the last 14 years. One has 22 years of experience and is underpaid by 10 steps. Another teacher has 15 years in Surrey, but is underpaid by nine steps. A 12-year veteran is underpaid by eight steps. Why are these teachers paid off the published pay scale by different numbers? Why is the teacher with the most experience hurt more than his colleagues? Bringing these chronically underpaid veteran teachers back to the equal pay is an important investment in the future of Surrey County schools. These dedicated teachers have earned less while saving the county money for years, only to see new hires making more money than them. I believe all county agencies should be transparent and pay at their published scales and to treat all employees in an equitable manner. I'm also upset that the people who have educated my three children and devoted years to Surrey schools are chronically underpaid in a manner that lacks transparency. Why do teachers who have taught in Surrey for a long time get paid less than newer, less experienced teachers? I am a teacher and I love my job. I am currently the County Teacher of the Year. I have taught a dozen subjects, coached soccer, collaborated on grants, invested in my own education to provide new and better opportunities for my students and given Surrey students countless hours outside of the classroom. Here are some facts. My actual step is 22. I am paid at step 12. That is an undercompensation of $9,138 compared to the published pay scale. That's 19% less than the county is saying that they're paying me. That's just this year. When I was at step 20, I was paid at step 14. That was a loss of $3,800. When I was at step 17, I was paid at step 15 and undercompensation of $1,800.
Time, Mr. Brinkman. Thank you. Oh yes, Teacher of the Year. That deserves some applause from the... I was getting ready to call y'all to congregation, amen. Thank you for your service to the students in Surrey County. At this time, are there any board comments? We'll start with Mr. Bird.
I want to say congratulations, Ms. Little, for your service to our county. Also want to say congratulations to Coach Jones for all your service. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Barnes, for bringing up the pony baseball because I used to ride with Ms. Barnes plenty of times in that station wagon. And also remember Coach Jones umpiring behind me while I was playing catcher. So thank you for that, your service, Mr. Jones. I want to say keep up the great work, Ms. Ghost, for all that you do for our students and connecting them with opportunities for internship, opportunities and career exploration. Continue to do that. Kudos for that. And also, Mr. Brinkman, I want to thank you for your connect, your service to our county. And also I want to say thank you for advocating for salary equity because it is important and I'm a huge advocate for educators. So you know, continue to do what you do and hopefully we can, we can work towards progress in that area. And again, thank you, Ms. Rollins. Thank you all for your, your service to our county.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bird. We have, again, Mr. Drury signed up to speak on, and the way he signed it, we missed him. He wanted to come back for public comments, so we'll open it back up for Mr. Drury for three minutes. No problem, sir.
So thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Jen, and for this evening. I just want to talk briefly. In the 1990s, I had the opportunity to, and delight to be in the corporate world and the business world and it allowed me the opportunity to visit communities and community meetings, sometimes as the applicant from, from Canada right on down through middle North America, on down into South America. And the reason I bring this up is I saw a lot of rural areas and villages attempting to survive, just like we are here in Surrey. And they, they continued to do so and of course, we compete against them in a way. But it's not an issue that's just here. It's, it's everywhere. And what I saw were the successful ones were actively involving their citizens in their government and advocating for their citizens. And I bring this up because we citizens living south of the Blackwater, I'm not sure why that quirk went when they drew the Surrey County line, but they came out of the swamp and lopped us off. But for the ones that live south of the Blackwater, we've got two energy projects going on that at the present and feel we don't have anyone advocating for us. One, I don't know, maybe you'll have it, maybe not. We call it, the locals, we call it the Columbia Gas Line. It's the big natural gas line. There's two lines that go through southern Surrey on down to Norfolk. I think maybe it's owned by TRC or something at this, at this point. It's an existing gas line and they've proposed a new 24-inch gas line going down that same easement. The first one was put in the 1950s and they're upgrading it to a 24-inch one. Part of it is that they're going to double the size of the easement for construction is happening now. And I don't mean to over complicate this, but the citizens there, we are waking up in the mornings and seeing people going across our property and I call it trespassing and we have to go out there and say, "Who are you and what are you doing?" And they say, they tell us. But anyway, we try to be polite. A lot of activity is going on over there and I'm going to meet with the representatives Saturday to try to figure out what the heck is, is going on. They're talking about starting construction on that. They tell me probably in 2024 and not indicating, you can understand when you've got a 300-foot swath going across the fields, it's going to be very disruptive to us landowners as well as the farmers in the county. So, so hopefully the farmers and all of us will be compensated. I just want to make y'all aware of that. I'm not sure what local government officials can do other than tell them to be nice to us and tell us when they're coming on our property. Especially, seriously, especially on Sundays, you may have people on your property. So I think I've got a good wife from Texas that's gotten them straight on that. So I think they're, they're a little bit more polite to us now. So. The other one is the Align Methane Project. And this is very confusing for people because we've got two entities working in the same area. So you never know who to call when you see people on your property. As y'all know, presently I'm contesting this, the legal notice of this project as a citizen and an attorney in the demerit hearing. It has been delayed and I'm sure Ms. Perkins has kept y'all informed of that and I think it's late April or something is when that's going to come back.
Three minutes, Mr. Drury.
What's that?
Three minutes.
Is up?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you so much. All I want to say is that the project is progressing over there. And again, we just don't feel like we have anyone over there advocating for us and we just wish we could change this. Thank you.
Continuing with, with the agenda of board comments left off with Mr. Bird, we go to Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening to everyone. Thank everyone for coming out tonight. I thank everyone who's listening to us at home. I just want to continue with the thank yous. I guess this meeting is a lot of acknowledgements. It seemed like we have been giving great news all night. So I want to continue that by also congratulating Ms. Honorable Judy Little. That's a huge accolade and thank you for making history right here in Surrey County. Mr. Wade and Staff, thank you guys for your updates and everything with that. Coach Jones, congratulations, man. Funny, can I tell you a real quick story about Coach Jones? Coach Jones coached me in school. We won a state championship together for a state championship in basketball at Surrey County High. But also too, I shared this story with some of my students, how I told my old coach, told us a story one time that he was playing football. You know, you need 11 players to play. But evidently, I think some players got sick or something and they only had eight. So Coach Jones said he had to hike the ball, catch it, throw it and catch it. So he played at the center, the quarterback and receiver. So you know, to say that, to hear that he won, was inducted in the Hall of Fame in Norfolk State. And I was always questioning that story, but hearing that accolade, I think you were probably right, Coach. So I get you that one. But yeah, but again, congratulations, man. But moving on to Ms. Ghost and I really appreciate all you do for our local community by giving people jobs. We understand that's a hard task, not only locally, but nationally. I understand a lot of people don't want to work like they used. I don't know what's going on. It must be something in the water. But hopefully, hopefully get that resolved right here in our, in our local community in Surrey County by just being pioneers and incorporating our youth right there in where it all starts, I believe, right there in our school system. So continue that good work. And I did hear a lot of students talk about this. So it is a great, great accomplishment for you and your staff. We remind everyone, in order for us to work together, we need to come out to these community engagements. I believe we have one coming up on Monday, March 6th. So just remind everyone to come out there to voice your input. Tell us, the staff here in, in our government center exactly what you guys are looking forward to see. So that way we can kind of meet on a common ground to see how we could work together. So again, that is Monday, March 6th at 6:00 PM at the Surrey Parks and Rec. So please come out there and support that, please. Almost done, Mr. Chair. I almost promised. Last but not least, I want to thank everyone who gave out their comments today. Mr. Brinkman, thank you for all your, your hard work and due diligence. I can vouch for Mr. Brinkman. He's a hard worker and he's really dedicating what he does to our students here in our, our community. So keep up the good work on that. And as well as Ms. Barnes, Dr. Shay, welcome. What, what, district are you in, Dr. Shay? Don't know. Alright, we're going to have to find that out before we leave today, okay? So yeah, but welcome.
It's Cobham.
Cobham, okay. Alright, well, we'll figure that out. But welcome, welcome, welcome. And Mr. Drury, thank you for your, your feedback and everyone else too. And lastly, and this, I promise this is it. You know, as a farmer, you know, we're about to get cranked up pretty soon in these, in the highways. I know I'm excited to get back in the tractor. So I just ask the citizens just to be patient, you know, as far as the farmers out there trying to get to their fields. You know, we want to get off the road as soon, as quickly as possible. So we just ask you guys just be patient. I understand there's a lot of safety concerns when we are driving this heavy and wide equipment down the road. So just be mindful of that. And thank you for the time, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I'm not going to go through all the accolades that have been said. I, I absolutely applaud everybody who, who's been brought up today. Ms. Little, especially you with your number of years of service. I would just like to, again, welcome Dr. Shay and then, and the others who spoke tonight. Again, as I've always said at every meeting, I ask that you please invite your neighbors, your friends, your family to come to these meetings. Listen, speak up and, and give us some support in, in the growth of Surrey County. I just ask that y'all do that and I appreciate all y'all being here, those on television. I wish y'all a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Mrs. Little.
Sort of like Mr. Calhoun, I am very appreciative of all the thank yous for me tonight. It was a surprise. I don't want anybody to think I was not surprised. I was very surprised and shocked, actually. But I also just want to say thank you to my board members and to those who have spoken tonight. We hear you. Some things we can accomplish, some things we cannot accomplish, but we do appreciate you sharing those things that are of concern to you. We want to welcome the gentleman to Surrey, our home here on the James River. We love Surrey as I have already stated. Surrey has been my home. I was born in Surrey and moved away but came back and have been able to be fortunate enough to serve the county. So, and Ms. Ghost, oh my, Mrs. Ghost is an excellent workforce person. She has worked for our county for quite a while and done a great job. She fought a long time to get those students to go to Dominion. She didn't understand why, but now she understands it did finally happen. So thank you, Ms. Ghost. And we do have some new employees. We want to thank them for being here. And to my family, thank you for taking out the time to come out and, and for keeping it a secret. Believe me, they didn't say a word and they normally do. So thank you for that. Love the county, love you all, all citizens and we're, I mean, you know, you have decisions to make and those decisions, we have to make them based on sound judgment and what we feel like is better for the community. So thank you all for coming out tonight and be safe when you leave here. God bless.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I would like to say ditto to all comments that have been made tonight that's applicable. And we thank the citizens for being out tonight. This is an exciting time to be serving the citizens of Surrey County. We have a lot of irons in the fire. The board is contemplating a number of things to make Surrey all the better than what it is. I brag about Surrey where I go. I think this is the best county in the world, but we want to do even more to make it even better. So I thank you all for taking the time out and as Honorable Mr. Pierce stated, there's a community action meeting on Monday night. Please come out and we're going to have a presentation for the citizens to see and to get input from the citizens as we endeavor to improve the best county in the world. So thank you all for coming out tonight. And there is one item before we leave the board comments that I will bring up. And that is on yesterday evening, I believe it was, the passing of Ms. Jean Stewart, who was a volunteer member of the Dindron Volunteer Fire Department. So we as a board would like to have a moment of silence in honor of a citizen who gave her civic duty to this county. Thank you. We pray the strength of the Stewart family at this time. Board Members, you have before you our reports. One coming from the Blackwater Regional Library, the Director's Report. And we have the Building Officials Report. Are there any questions on the reports that we have received? If there be none, we do have our January Investment Letter. Are there any questions on our investment letter? If there be none, we will move now to closed session. We will ask our legal counsel to give us a closed section that we may go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your motion required today is to convene a closed session pursuant to, one, Virginia Code Section 2.23711A1 to discuss appointments to the Economic Development Authority, and Virginia Code Section 2.23711A8 to consult with legal counsel regarding obligations related to management of county property located in the Surrey District. And Mr. Chairman, I will need a motion and a second.
Do we have a motion to enter a closed session in accordance to a closed session? Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Probably move the second, all in favor. Let it be known by the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We will now enter into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we would appoint Mr. Howell to the EDA.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second. It's been properly moved a second. Starting with roll call vote for Mr. Trenton Howell. Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun.
No.
Mrs. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Bird.
Aye.
Vote as aye as well. Due to the vote, we don't need to, we have no need to carry this last name for the appointment.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, Ms. Calhoun.
I just like to make my comment. I, this vacancy was in my district, and I was not notified or asked or anything about Mr. Howell. You all knew my position last month in the meeting, requesting Ms. Diane Cheek to be on the board. And all of a sudden, I feel like I've been ostracized because she's in my district and representing my district, and, and I, and I'm promoting her to be on the EDA. It's, it's pretty sad that you don't support my efforts and my thoughts of who that I would like to be on the EDA board, and, and even have a comment regarding that issue and going behind my back, I feel, and not even talk to me about it. Thank you very much.
Are there any other matters of business that entertain the board at this time? If not, the board would entertain a motion for adjournment until our. Do we have a date?
We do not.
We do not have a date until further notice.
April 6th.
Our April 6th date. We have a motion that has a second.
Second.
Then properly move a second, all in favor, let it be known by the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned.